Yeah, so the basketball game got 8 p.m. movie building. Okay, that's afternoon and then you got the Big Ten Championship. At eight o'clock. Okay, now we got tickets.
I didn't think about.
In Indy, both games are at Indy. That's at the Fieldhouse and the other one's at?
That place was fantastic. Big parade events.
Yeah. You get a hotel room? Not yet, but downtown over a thousand bucks, but we're gonna stay over in Carmel.
You mean the, the three hundred dollar room at the thousand?
Yeah. It'll probably go.
Go to We've Been Down in Boogerton.
Yeah, five hundred bucks.
That was in nineteen, nineteen hundred. I got here in one day. It was right where I stand with, you know.
Yeah.
And I mean, come on, you said I'm back to work. That will be good.
Yeah.
I got it. It's like three minutes.
Well, I like Paul State. We stayed at the Union for eight bucks a night.
Yeah.
Alex went to the game Saturday. It started raining. It was too cold.
Yeah.
It's gone.
Yeah. Yeah. Didn't you sit down? We're gonna start. I'd like to call a order to muster town council regular meeting by October twentieth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P.M. Wendy, could you please call the wall?
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Here.
Councillor Nellens.
Here.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Shinkin.
Here. Back up. Everybody rise. We're gonna have a moment of silence for your loved one, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the righteous stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We have a public hearing and this is additional appropriations for ordinance nineteen ninety four.
So you have first reading on this ordinance since your last regular meeting. Tonight, you're going to be asked to have your required public hearing and then later in the meeting, you'll be asked to, to approve ordinance. There's two funds that would need. I'm sorry, there's one fund that we need D.L.G.F. approval. The rest of the appropriations to be in place once the ordinance is adopted.
Judy, you need to read this before public comment?
The which?
The, uh, ninth ordinance for additional appropriations, whereas and all that are just.
You don't need to read.
Okay. So if anybody wants to come up and, um, talk about ordinance nineteen ninety four, please state your name and your address, please.
Hopefully it's on. Mike, move it eighteen thirty-three to the plane. Just a quick question. Where's the money coming from to go for these additional appropriation? Cause I didn't see anything. It just says you want so much for this one, so much for that one. But you gotta be getting it from somewhere. Where's it coming from?
These are coming from existing cash balances that we have. If you, uh, if you're looking on the agenda online, there's a fifth document that's called the state form and there it lays out the numbers and where we're coming from. But these are from existing cash balances. There's not, we're not generating new revenue. This is just seeking you permissions to spend the funds that we already have.
I just gotta learn how to read that thing next time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You find out, let us know. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. I'm putting some public hearing for ordinance nineteen ninety four. And now we're gonna have public comment. All public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for the public comment section. All speakers must sign into the public speaker sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comments to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room. And with that, I'm gonna start public comment. Would anybody like to come up for public comment? Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Please say your name.
My name is Natalie Drepack. I'm at eighty-one oh one Shriver Drive here in Muster. I just had a question about, is there a plan to address a lot of the outages and the foggy lights and the light poles? And it seems like the sidewalks are really starting to crumble as it pertains to the, uh, the bricks. They're kind of very lopsided and somewhat dangerous. So I didn't know if there was a plan to address either of those items.
Now, where is this located? The?
Well, all along Calumet, up and down all the businesses. If you look at the, the glass itself, a lot of them are fobbed over. Some of them are broken and the light fixture is out. It's all together. So just seems like there's some inconsistency. The aesthetics looks pretty poor and they, again, the brick is starting to sink in on the sidewalks where it looks like it could be a hazard. Anybody that's walking down it. And again, not very aesthetically pleasing.
Okay, could we get back with her?
Uh, Alexa, I assume she's speaking about her decorative lights, the small ones, all the lamps on Kegman Avenue were all changed LED, so on the tall lights.
But the glass is what the problem is. The glass itself, it's starting to fall. Some of them are clear, some of them are not.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Sure. Thank you. And then if we could look at sidewalk two and just see what's going on. You know, we're gonna be starting to look at Kelly Avenue too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Going once? Going twice? Public comment is closed. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Nellens. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion to go second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Chuck, sorry, I shut up. No discussion. Can we, can we have both?
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up the whole business. And we are looking at ordinance nineteen ninety four.
And you about your public hearing, uh, and now you're asked if you need to adopt the ordinance.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approved, introduced ordinance nineteen ninety four as presented. We have a motion.
I'll second.
Could have a second. Any discussion over this? That being said, please talk about.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up to ordinance nineteen ninety five, the creation of the tip fund for Maple Leaf Crossing.
You had first read on this ordinance at the last meeting as well. This is to create a separate fund to account for the tip revenues and expenditures associated with the Maple Leaf Crossing development only. Uh, it's a administrative requirement that we have.
Need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to adopt, introduce the ordinance nineteen ninety five on second reading as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
A second by Mr. Nellens. Any discussion over this one?
I just wanna clarify, Maple Leaf already is in a tip district.
Yes.
You're required to account tracks of money.
Yeah. When we think about the tip area, it's, it's rather large. Maple Leaf Crossing is its own separate distinct tip district, so it needs to have its own separate fund where we track just those expenses so that they're not commingled with anything in the balance.
So that attract of income?
And expenditures.
And expenditures.
Yes.
Thank you.
And this is also approving the transfer of the existing cash balances associated with Maple Leaf out of the current tip fund into the fund that you're being asked to create.
Is this the only one that we have like this right now?
Right now, this is the only one like this. But if there, if there are future tip districts or carve-outs or whatever, we would be going through the same process.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? With that, we need to just talk about.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up new business ordinance nineteen ninety six, the amendment to Schedule A.
So as part of our efforts regarding SCA one, um, and general stewardship of the town, uh, we staff has done a review of the fees and services. Schedule A is where we keep track of what all of those are. And tonight you're being asked to have first read on an ordinance that would change some of the fees that we're charging. Um, it would be for the annual business registration and the contractor applications. Those fees would be increased. Uh, the, the contractor application, the, the registration fee will remain the same, but there'll be an additional fifty dollar charge application processing fee with that. The business registration would go up by twenty-five dollars. Uh, solicitors permits are, uh, will also be increased and we're gonna start charging for collection of excess yard waste or, uh, just general debris. Sometimes residents put out an excessive amount. Uh, and so we're defining that and be collecting them. In addition, we're changing the fee structure for the fines associated with false alarms. Currently, uh, residents or local property gets two free false alarms each year. We're changing that to one free and we're creating two separate tiers. One set of fees for the residential, a separate for the commercial. It's more time consuming to take care of a commercial one, the, the amount of work that goes into being sure that property is safe. Uh, so there's a slightly higher fee associated with that. We are also reviewing the fees associated with building permits. Uh, that takes a little bit more, uh, research. Uh, we, so those are gonna be presented at a later date. We would like for that to have these put into place by the end of November, uh, contractor registrations, business registrations for twenty twenty-six. You can begin applying for those in December. So we would like to have the fee structure in place before that many years.
With that, can I have a motion for proposed ordinance nineteen ninety six?
I'll make the motion by roll call vote here proposed ordinance nineteen ninety six on first reading and set the second reading for the next regular council meeting.
We have a motion by Mr. Nellens. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
You have a second. But Mr. Gardner, any, uh, discussion?
President, I'd like to direct a question to Conflame Abbott. Ms. Abbott, what, what type of revenue do you anticipate these changes produce for the town, please?
So, um, in the memo, we outlined what we're estimating those to be. Um, we're looking at for all of them except one of these, that they would go into the general fund. The collection of yard waste would go into the solid waste fund. That's estimated to be about twenty-five hundred dollars. So the total potential increase that we're estimating is just over a hundred thousand dollars. That would all go into the general fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question?
I'd like to make a comment. Be honest with you, um, I have some concerns about the additional fees against the residents for them cleaning up their yard and doing some things. I would like to have some involvement with that, if at all possible. On setting that rate, it sounds like you're not really looking at a lot of money at twenty-five hundred dollars. I realize it may take some additional help, but I've also seen where things can just be taken care of and be done with it, so.
Well, this is, uh, and I don't wanna speak for someone else, but it would be for four hundred and twenty cubic feet. We're talking about a lot.
A very large.
A lot. Um, and most residents, uh, what they'll do is they would just, i- if they have that much, they would put some out each week, a little bit each week, and that's how it's been handled in the past. Uh, but this is for a large amount and they would be notified ahead of time that we're not gonna pick it up and then automatically charge them. There would be a conversation with them first. Uh, before they were assessed that.
Well, again, I'd just like to be involved in a little bit of discussion on that. If at all possible.
And Alice, are you thinking about setting so before the, for the council room? Further conversation?
Well, this could be, uh, discussed in an agenda review because this is only the first read.
Uh, Ms. Abbott, Mr. President, I have a follow-up to Ms. Abbott. Where in the memo are you? Is the hundred thousand dollar projection? Here, I don't see that. Maybe I'm missing.
Let me. Apologize, the incorrect memo has been put up there. Uh, there, there was a different memo that had those fees. Uh, I can forward this to council so that you can see. Uh, the business registration, we're anticipating ten thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars more. The contractor application fee we're estimating would generate fifty-five thousand. Solicitors permits about four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, and false alarms, we're estimating about thirty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, that would, that totals a hundred and three thousand forty dollars. And then the, the yard waste. And then the the yard waste were estimating at twenty-five.
Contractor fees are typically paid by contractors conducting business in the town. And false alarm fees are paid for the additional costs that are imposed upon the police department to respond to a false alarm.
Correct, and and the hope is not so much, and and this is kind of a double-edged sword, but the hope is not to turn the false alarms into a moneymaker, but to encourage the residents, the businesses to solve the root problem that's creating the false alarms.
And one more follow-up. And the challenge that we are facing is the financial impact of S C A one, correct?
Yes.
Um, have you received from D L G F, which is the Department of Local Government Finance? That's the department down in Indianapolis that will review our budget request and tell us what we can get. If they will determine what we are entitled to as tax revenue. Have you received that tax revenue conclusion from them yet?
Meaning for the, what there's gonna certify for for twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
No, we will not receive that until sometime in December.
What are you anticipating in loss of tax revenue?
That's uh, it it, that's very difficult to say. And some are, some estimates that we see, and these have gone back to April when they were first contemplating this. Some were at eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-six, and some were at double that or one point six million. Uh, there have not been any new projections provided. Uh, later this week, there's some staff and some council are attending the AM ideas summit where it is, the sessions are very heavily going into S C A one uh and and its impacts and ways to work with it. But I have not received any, I I don't have any better information that I can provide.
So do you anticipate finding some big pot of money somewhere in the budget to look up another seven hundred thousand to one point five million?
I don't think we're gonna find one gigantic solution to it.
This is the way.
Little by little.
Little by little, and today's, tonight is a good first step. Thank you.
And there will be three of us counselors going to the meeting to learn more about S C H. And uh, we have clerk treasurer as well as our town manager and our comptroller going down this week too. So there's gonna be uh six people down there learning more about what's gonna be going on, and we'll be finding out quickly.
Just so you're aware, the correct memo is on Trello, so if you'd like to look at it there, it just didn't make it to the agenda.
Mr. President, could we have staff put the correct memo on the Munster website so that the rest of the town can see it, please? Thank you.
Again, I I guess my only comments is, is this this S C A one, there's a lot of discussion about it. Uh, it's also really challenging towns to really figure out what the true cost of these services are, and and I would mention to say that the time that a police department takes in in responding to a false alarm, i- if it's a mid-sized business that might have two, you know, three or four doors in there, you probably, how many officers are doing that? It, there's, e- even the cost that we're charging here probably doesn't cover our true cost of service.
Two.
A- and and they spend maybe an hour to two hours or.
It's depending on how long they have to stand by till the property owner or party in charge responds.
Right, so so again, this is still, you know, it's it's a lot of the services that we have to really look and review and make sure if we're actually subsidizing the cost, there's a true reason we're doing that, or if we get a true cost of what that service is. So again, I I think I I applaud the staff for going through this and looking at these, and there's gonna be other things they didn't find as we move along that the true cost of these services are a little bit more than what we maybe have charged in the past, and uh, different things like this might come around. So I can appreciate the the feedback and and the uh, information that's in front of us.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussions? Wendy, please go one.
Yes. Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes. That brings up the real estate purchase agreements.
Yes, when the the property of four thirty-seven, four thirty-nine Ridge Road became uh available for purchase, that's a property that uh, had Athens Pizza and popcorn shop that became available for purchase. We had a discussion about purchasing it for future development. I obtained two appraisals for the property. One came in at four hundred and ten thousand dollars, the other came in at four hundred and forty thousand dollars. I then talked to the property owner, made the offer of four hundred and ten thousand dollars, which he accepted. Dave Weston prepared the real estate purchase agreement, which I sent to the owner. He signed it. That's what you have for you tonight. So what you do need to do tonight, if you wanna purchase the property, is there's a motion to approve the purchase agreement and then assign it to the redevelopment commission. And then when we go to the redevelopment commission meeting, meeting, you'll approve it at that time.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the real estate purchase agreement between the town of Munster and Serrentel Limited uh P P for the purchase of property commonly known as four thirty-seven and four thirty-nine Ridge Road in Munster, Indiana for the amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars and assign the purchase agreement to the redevelopment commission.
We have a motion by Mr. Gardner. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
A second by Mr. Nellens. We have any discussion on this?
Mr. President, I'd like to weigh in. I think this is a well-considered purchase agreement. That intersection there at Arison has always been disjointed with as far back as I can remember. I'm going back forty-five years with the one weird traffic light that you have to be almost on top of it to see. And this is an effort by this council to correct that. Where we go with that, I think we're still discussing it, but I think this is a movement in the right direction, and more importantly, is my understanding that we are not using operating funds for this purchase. We are using funds out of our TIF account. And for folks in the audience that don't know what the TIF account is, that's basically the town savings account that we've accumulated over years from new development for infrastructure projects, and this would certainly qualify. So I think this is a smart move, and I I support it.
I think it's a great move. Four hundred and ten, you're seeing businesses pop up for a million dollars for a corner? Makes mine. Any other discussion?
Well, I I echo uh Councillor Peterson's words, and I think this is smart on our part to acquire this land, and we will work on it for future development or future arrangement. But as they come up, it's best to to acquire it.
Any other? That being said, Wendy.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up to our last item, paving and water main change order number six.
This is for the twenty twenty-four paving and water main job included work on Franland Parkway, Chestnut Lane, Molly Lane, Camelia Drive, and White Oak. Change order number six is an additional thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four thousand and thirty-four cents. Pay application number seven balancing pay application in the amount of thirty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents for a project total of five million four hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'd like a motion uh to approve Frank, Frank Riley.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Ruth Riley change order number six for the twenty twenty-four paving and water main project for revised completion date and repair to the raised crosswalk is in application number seven for a total cost of thirty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents and a project total of five million four hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Mr. Nellens. Do we have any discussion over this?
I have a thing to cl- point of clarification. Who should sign the uh change order, the town manager or the council president?
Yeah, the town manager. Or no? I'll, I'll submit.
Just just checking.
That.
You're telling me, or the, okay.
Council president.
Council president. Thank you.
Okay. Back to the, please call the vote.
Yes, I will. Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes. Reports. Anybody?
Portfolio report. Okay, let's go. Report, portfolio report.
Let's do it.
Uh, just wanna make known that tomorrow night, Tuesday, October twenty-second is the park board meeting. Uh, also, um the Munster Civic Foundation is uh preparing and accepted a letter from the Munster Town Council uh supporting the upcoming Heart and Soul Grant application. It's being launched through the Legacy Foundation. And on November tenth at seven thirty, uh, the Civic Foundation would like to invite all community groups and organizations to a uh question answer period about the upcoming two thousand twenty-six Civic Civic Foundation grant program to improve uh community events, special events, programs, and the whole placemaking idea throughout the town of Munster. Uh, if you have any questions, you can certainly feel free to contact me at c gardener at munster dot org. I'd happy to answer questions, but that is uh Monday, November tenth at seven thirty is the meeting.
Thank you. Any other reports, portfolio reports? That being said, all town council meetings will be done at six thirty unless otherwise noted. Our next town council meeting will be November third, twenty twenty-five. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
By here a second. I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sense the meeting, and now we're gonna start the redevelopment meeting. We do not have a school board liaison with us.
He came last week.
Yeah.
It's a little awesome. Well, it's okay. All right, six fifty-six.
Six fifty-six, and now I wanna call the order of the Redevelopment Commission regular meeting for October twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six fifty-six.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
President.
Commissioner Nellens.
President.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Shinkin.
Here. We're gonna have public comment. Public comments for redevelopment commission only. All public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for public comment section. All speakers must sign into the public speaker sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes but not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room, and with that, I'm gonna open up public comment redevelopment commission only. Going once, going twice. Closing public comment consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Nellens. Do we have a second? I'll second that. A second by Mr. Gardner. Do we have any discussion over this? That being said, Wendy, please.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Shinkin.
Yes. Uh, we have no old boot business, new business, the purchase agreement, or is that going through the redevelopment commission?
That's who we are.
Okay, I thought we go through those.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve the real estate purchase agreement between the town of Munster and Serrentel Limited P P for the purchase of the property commonly known as four thirty-seven through four thirty-nine Ridge Road in Munster for the amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars.
We have a motion by Mr. Gardner. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Mr. Nellens. Is there any discussion? You're really accepting the assignment now. Okay, I realized like you had the same group, right? But
Yeah.
There's an assign, there's an assignment from the town to the redevelopment commission. Okay, you're approving the agreement and accepting the assignment.
I will change my motion to uh state that we accept the assignment from the Munster Town Council.
And I'll change my second to reflect that.
Do we have any discussion? But that being said, Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Shinkin.
Yes. Any reports? Any announcements? All redevelopment commission regular meetings. Always follow the town council meetings. So the next one is November third. With time being determined, um, I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Need a second. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wanna thank everybody for coming.
Students, if you need pictures, come on up here quick. Get some pictures.